The time is six o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We will begin this evening with roll call. Is that what we're doing?
Actually, we started that. That's okay.
I'm low school.
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes, in a Sullivan way.
I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of Second Ward Alderman, David Parker, and Third Ward Alderman, Mike Went, at the committee of the whole and council meetings of July 14th, 2020.
Thank you. We have a motion by Alderman Moyers. There is a second?
Second.
We have a second by Alderman Williams. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye for that motion, yeah.
Sorry.
Walden?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker? I'm sorry, did he say aye?
Yeah.
Thank you. Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. Roll call, please. What does it matter with me today? All right, I'm gonna try this again. So, we have approval of the remote electronic attendance, and then we have a correction from last week. Or, no, actually, it was several weeks ago, I think.
That was last week.
Was it just last week?
It was, I know.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve grid Messiah to the Moline Center Main Street Committee.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Alderman Pop, second by Alderman Moyer. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Walden?
Aye.
Williams?
Ayes.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. Are there any questions on the agenda this evening? Hearing none, we are gonna move to the agenda items. We have... Do we have any other this evening, Marty?
No.
No other? So, we're gonna move into our informational items. The first item is rebuild Illinois funds. Priority construction projects. Joe Kullenbeck.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, council. Tonight, I really wanted to come to you guys and kind of give you an overview of our Illinois rebuild funds. We touched on it earlier this year. This is a program that the state is allocating money to local municipalities. That money is a set number predetermined. We're getting... Yeah, we're getting approximately over the course of the next three years and six monthly or monthly payments of a total of $2,865,000 and some change. So, over the next three years, that's what will be allotted, just under $900,000 in some annually. Of these funds, they gotta be used for bondable projects. So, we can't use them for maintenance-type projects where there'd be sealing and, you know, seal coat-type roads. They gotta be bondable. They gotta be long-lasting projects. I'll get into a list of those types of options here in a little bit. We can use the money on one large project if that's what we decided to do. We can also break it down and use it on multiple types of projects. We just have to earmark the money and have projects set aside for those within one year of receiving the funds. Again, these are... These types of projects, project development, design, land acquisition, demo, all this, everything listed here, reconstructions are allowable, and then structural overlays, which is not just a mill and overlay of asphalt, but a structural overlay, which is a little bit more intense and inclined, but still able to do those types of projects. So, what we... What staff has put together for you is a... Several different lists. These lists are broken down into types of construction projects and different ideas that we've come up with as... And identified as priorities within the city of Moline. This first list that you see here are street reconstruction locations. So, these projects are gonna be like our typical reconstructions where we take it down to base. We repair any utilities underneath that need it, curb gutter, the whole nine yards. And we can include whatever we need to include on these ADA sidewalks, everything. And this is a list of seven that we've identified as priority for us for different reasons, whether it's... We've got some in here that have some red water utility locations. We have others that are seal coat projects that we've been on radar for a very long time. And really, with these lists, I'm just... We wanted to get it in front of you so that when it comes time for us to plan our 2021 construction season, we want to prioritize our list from you. We would like some direction from council, which way we want to go, so that when we... When it is time to get these things off the ground, we're ready to go and staff is ready to jump right into those and get them going for you. So, these are some of the street reconstruction locations. I do have some pictures that I can play in a loop afterwards, but I wasn't able to get them to go simultaneously. And this presentation, I'm sure, is available to you, so you could review them and take a look. And if you know of any that you'd like to add from these, for whatever reason, let staff know, and we'll develop... We're looking to develop a long-term plan, not only for next year, but for the next two, three, four, or five years, and we can have a roadmap of where we want to go with our roads. Here's a list of structural asphalt overlay locations. Some of these roads, you'll notice we're... We've done some patching on these in the past recent... Really, in recent years, and the idea with a structural asphalt overlay is to put this overlay on top of the road before the road gets deteriorated to a point where you have to rebuild it. So, these locations are fairly busy thoroughfares through the city, but they're in good enough shape right now to allow for an overlay project, which would be a project we could do under the rebuild funds. The PCI rating is a rating index that the engineering department uses to rate and record the quality of our roads. We do it annually. We update that list consistently, and ideally, a PCI of 65 and above is a good candidate still for a structural overlay. Saves a lot of money on all the infrastructure underneath, and it's a good way to increase the lifespan of that roadway. Here is a list of some design, engineering, and study projects that we feel could be a priority for the city of Moline going forward. The number one on our list is a completion of Phase One and Phase Two engineering for two bike paths, one on 19th Street from the Mississippi River to Avenue of the Cities. We do currently have $200,000 budgeted in this year's budget to use MFT funds for the engineering of that project. We would need additional money to complete it. We could... We have plenty to get started this year, move into 2021 to complete that. The second bike path is from Mississippi River to 17th Street... Or, I'm sorry, on the river, from 17th Street to I-74. Those are the two bike paths that we have prioritized right now. We feel like if we move forward with this, using rebuild funds for this, it would be ideal to combine these projects with the engineering. We'd get a better rate. They do work together anyway, so the engineering could be completed for both of these projects with a, you know, more seamlessly and more efficiently if we combined them together. We do have TAP funding for, let's see, the Mississippi River Bike Path. TAP funding is a transportation alternative program. It's designed for bike paths, pedestrian ways, things like that. That funding is available, and we have had it secured. We've had it secured for a number of years, and until we get the engineering completed and go ahead to do that, can't really spend those monies. But they're available to move forward, so that's our first one. Number two is a very broad topic of study. It's a flood mitigation study along the Mississippi River. I know Davenport entered into one of those recently, and for similar reasons, we're gonna... That's gonna help us identify... It's gonna help us identify solutions to some of the problems we have and challenges we have right now. These three separate line items underneath there, these were identified in the Moline mitigation, hazard mitigation plan that we worked with Rock Island County for. So, we had... There's a list of prioritized items in that mitigation plan. These three fall under that, and a study of the flood would help us identify those, work towards those solutions, and really work towards getting some of that stuff done. Some of them, again, we've applied for grant funding for the stormwater pump at 49th Street behind Par down on... Off of Fourth Avenue. We've gotten through the first stage of that, which is a very good sign. We still... I know it has engineering complete here. That's a misprint. We do have preliminary engineering done, and we've done... They've presented to us several. I think they presented to council in October of last year, I believe, with Mr. Hinton. So, you kind of have an idea of where that's at. Need to complete the engineering on that, implement, and start the permitting process, you know? So, all those things need to still come down the pipeline, but an option for the rebuild funds. Traffic studies are always a tool that can facilitate engineering and design of our roadways. We've recently done some road diets, and we look forward to completing that and moving our complete streets program into fruition. But, you know, if we... The traffic studies are gonna be a good tool for us and our committees to make the best decisions for those roadways. You know, road diets on 12th... Yeah, 12th Street and Avenue of the Cities, all those places. You know, we could definitely get some feedback, and it would help us get us going in the right direction. Some other miscellaneous-type projects that staff has identified. Replacement of the retaining wall at Jane Adams School. I think that's on 53rd Street. It's leaning pretty good. It's our retaining wall. It's leaning over the sidewalk there quite a bit. It's not fail mode yet, but it's gonna need a replacement at some point. That would be an idea for a bondable project that would qualify under the rebuild funds. The second item here is traffic signal replacement, and we listed these locations specifically. It's just eight intersections on 16th Street from the mall all the way up to 19th Avenue. We've identified these intersections as being approximately the same age as far as the light posts go. We had failure on one of them earlier this year, not from an accident, but just from rotting out at the base. It fell. We did replace it with a post, but we have 65 lighted intersections in the city that we maintain 100%. And we don't have a mechanism in line to push those continual repairs. We're more reactive at this point. If we decided to use some money to jumpstart that, we could then work to be more proactive in our long-term budgeting and annual budgeting to identify those weak and dated intersection lighting and give priority to those moving forward and be progressive instead of reactive in that sense. Couple of alley reconstructions would certainly fall under the options for rebuild Illinois funds. Again, we... I know this last year, we did rebuild one, and I know there are several in the city that can still use some work, and we've identified several of those in these lists for you. Bike path engineering through Morgan Park. It is part of our bikeways plan, and it's a priority that's been identified internally within the city. Some of that... Projects like that would be eligible for ITEP funding, similar to the other projects that we already have funding for, for the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program. And priority for those grant opportunities is really given to shovel-ready projects. So, the more projects we have on the shelf that are either entered into engineering, whether it's completed or through Phase One, as we apply for those grants, we're given a priority because of our commitment to those projects, and it really helps staff secure that type of funding. I believe that's really all I have. I mean, those are, again, just a really broad overview, a big-picture overview of some of the types of projects that we can use these rebuild funds for. And like I said, as we get into preparing for our 2021 construction season, if we could get input and some guidance from council, if there's anything you like about it, like what you've seen, what you don't like, we would like any kind of feedback would really help us prepare for the upcoming construction season. I would gladly take any questions at this time. Could you... I do have some pictures here, and they're not labeled. Great, but you can just stroll through these. I took several, just so you can kind of get a reference on where, if you read through that list, where these might be. And again, I can definitely share these with you, so you can take a look as you guys have time.
Maybe you said, and I just missed it, of the projects that you showed here that would be appropriate for that funding, which ones are already listed as a priority in our CIP plan?
I know we have 47. There's a couple of them that are listed in our 2021 CIP plan. But that, again, from what I've seen on that, that was a pretty preliminary budget idea. There are some that were removed from that just because of new data that we've collected and identified.
Do you have a sense of how much money will be allocated?
Through rebuild?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's $2,865,000.
Sorry, I missed that part. And then, do you have a recommendation for us of what projects we should look at? Or are you saying we can do all those?
We cannot do all of them. This is a list of... This is a list of entire projects that we feel like, over the next five, even to 10 years, especially larger ones, we would like to, you know, put into our long-term CIP projects. Some of the smaller ones, we can do with other MFT funds, I'm sure, and, you know, depending on how our funding comes in the next coming years, we would take your guys' opinion out. Yeah, we couldn't do all of them. We're looking for some direction. If you don't like things, if you do like things, if you want us to come back with specifics, when it comes time for that, we would gladly do that, too, so.
Thank you, Joe. Does anyone have any questions for Joe? Alderman Went?
Thank you, Joe, for your presentation. I guess my approach to it, I think, is somewhat similar with what the mayor had said, you know, obviously using this for projects that we already are going to be doing. But I also am intrigued, and I think that we should try as much as we can to use this to prepare ourselves or put us in a position where we can leverage it to get other grant funds. And so, your example of Morgan Park, I think this council, for quite some time, where there's a consensus that we need to get some kind of path through Morgan Park so people can and kids can get to school along that route and everything. But the cost is obviously a big hindrance of it. If we could use some of these funds to make it shovel-ready, so it's sitting on the shelf, so that we can apply... We may have to apply for that grant a couple of years in a row until we finally get it, but I think that that would be a good use of these funds to make sure that those priority projects, that we can leverage this money to get even more money, I think would be very helpful. And obviously, like with the grants that we already have that have just been sitting there idle because we haven't done the engineering on them, the last thing I would want, and I'm not sure where we are with the bike path from Avenue of the Cities down to the river or for the other one along the bike path, I sure as heck wouldn't want to be in a situation where those things got swept or we lose those grants because we took too long to get the engineering done. So, I'd like to see those get finished, so we can complete it and spend that money that's just sitting there waiting to be spent.
Thank you, Alderman Moyer.
I was just curious about 41st Street, because it was pretty much closed all last summer, getting repairs, and I see it's up there again.
Yeah, and again, that's one that we've done patching on recently, and the patch is a good Band-Aid, but if you can get that structural overlay on top of it, it extends the life of that base significantly. I mean, we're talking a minimum of 13-year project with these types of projects. So, yeah, ideally, yeah, we don't want to close down a road back-to-back seasons. We're not proposing that we do that this year or next year, but it can definitely be something that we look at over the next four to five years. And, you know, but at the same time, those are high-traffic areas, and if we can extend that road life for that amount of time, with saving that kind of money, too, we feel like it was, you know, it was something worth at least getting your opinion on and letting you... Making you aware of our options on roads like that.
Thank you. Alderman Walden?
Joe, the very first one you had up there on the Capitol project was the 34th Avenue corridor, and that had been about a two- or three-year program to complete the entire corridor, and this one last section is left. And I have had a couple of calls on why didn't you finish that last section? So, that one does intrigue me, and that one I would be interested in getting on the list.
Yeah, and we did prioritize these lists in order that we felt, you know, that were... So, you could follow them down, and as we shuffle, as we come forward with ideas for construction projects for the next year, the next two to three years, whatever direction we're given, we just... That was the idea of this presentation, get it in front of you early, so we get some feedback. We don't like that. We really like that. Let's maybe focus here, you know? It just gives us a really good, really good idea of where we need to go.
Alderman Potter?
The 34th Street corridor from Fourth Avenue up to... Or down to the riverfront, actually, from the train tracks from along western, I would suggest has been on the sidewalk and improvement area for a long time, and it's always slipped through the cracks because it's a high-priced item. I would suggest that would be a decent candidate for something, too.
Yeah, and I think part of that 34th Street one was an alternative bike route also when River Drive floods. I think that ties into an alternative secondary bike path, pedestrian way, too. So, there's some correlation with that is why we put that one on here as well. Obviously, the road needs some work. It's in rough shape, but it does serve another purpose, so.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments or questions for Joe?
Your Honor?
Yes.
One quick follow-up, well, I guess two quick things. I had talked with Scott Hinton previously about that 34th across railroad tracks, and it was a priority on the sidewalk and trying to figure out a way to do that. But he had mentioned a couple of different times that he suggested waiting on it because of how they were going to engineer the new crossings, and he had been in some conversations that, you know, if we have it as one of our priorities, and here's how we want to do it engineering-wise, that they may come in and they may do, you know, like you said, if it's an alternative for a bike route or whatever, that they would include that as part of their engineering for those intersections. So, a portion, to some extent outward, would be paid by the train upgrade, and that after that is done, then us backfill whatever the remainder is, rather than us go in and do it, and then they come back in and tear it up or design it differently, and it's a waste of money. So, that had been a conversation with Scott Hinton a couple of times. The other thing that I just wanted to mention, if we can, in the future, with presentations like this, if you could send this stuff out in advance, I think that'd be really helpful for us to be able to review and kind of digest it a little bit. I mean, the mention on 41st Street, I mean, I was watching you give the presentation, and I must have gleaned over that and didn't actually see it. But, and I don't have it in front of me that I can go over and everything. So, if you could... If we could get those presentations in advance, so that we could look at it and have some upfront thought about it, so I think it'll make these conversations a little bit more productive, if that'd be correct.
Yeah, absolutely. It was my intention to get that to you. I apologize about that. And I agree, it would be much more productive, and we do look forward to these conversations going forward. To touch on 34th Street and the railroad tracks, I know Hinton knows a lot more about this side of the engineering part of it than I do, and I'm sure if the railroad decides to do what they're gonna do, they're going to do it. At the same time, I personally wouldn't want to wait on the railroad if this was something we wanted to do. We'd be waiting a long time. So, if this becomes a priority, and, you know, we'll definitely research that a little bit more for you, but I appreciate the feedback.
Thank you, Joe. Oh, we have Alderman Parker.
Joe, thanks for the presentation. Again, to echo Mike's sentiment about being able to see this, maybe you can look back and help me understand, but 19th Avenue, is there any plans on your plan there? East... Or, excuse me, west of 12th Street? You know, it's a pretty rough road. Rock Island's done there. What is 18th Avenue is our 19th Avenue to the border, and it looks like we're doing from like 12th Street or 13th Street over to 16th Street. Is there... Was there anything in your plans to do any improvements on 19th Avenue for that gap that's not being taken care of?
Yeah, that's another one that we've identified as a big priority. Again, that would be an expensive project. It's not eligible for an overlay. The road's too bad. The curb and gutters would pretty much be buried after an element like that. So, again, we have more than just what I gave you guys tonight. There are several other opportunities and roadways that need some long-term planning. 19th Avenue, absolutely. So, we'd be happy to add those to the list, and we can prioritize this longer and further for everybody, too, so we can, you know, so we can see it all the way down the list if that's where we need to be. If that's where... If that's what we need to provide and have an updated list, I'd be happy to begin putting that together.
Alderman Went?
Yeah, I think that that would be really helpful, so that we can see, you know, where these things are. Are they asphalt overlay? Are they reconstruction? Because I could have sworn, when we were going through the budget this last year, Scott Hinton, in one of his suggestions, was to do actually an asphalt overlay on 19th from the border to 16th Street with only that one section that we're reconstructing right now. Happened to be reconstruction, and the rest of it was going to be an asphalt overlay the entire length. So, if we could reexamine that, or, I don't know, maybe we figured out that the road was worse off than we thought, and now it's not eligible for an asphalt overlay, but I could have sworn that that was part of Scott's presentation for a possible CIP in which we were quadrant off the city into, I think, four quadrants, and if we were gonna do a ton of asphalt overlays in quadrant one, that was gonna be one that we would have done this year or next. I'll try to find it and send it to you, Joe.
Yeah, no, and it may still... We couldn't possibly do an overlay, maybe just not a structural overlay. There is a difference between a mill and an asphalt overlay. The structural overlays require thicker layers and bases, and because of the... That might be my understanding. You may be absolutely correct. We may be able to add that to this list and use it with rebuild. It was my understanding that we couldn't, and so it wasn't on here, but I could definitely have that wrong. We could definitely look into it, though.
Thank you, Joe. Alderman Parker?
This is a kind of a larger conversation, Joe, and may not really be directed at you, maybe more Marty and J.D., but I was on the website, and we only show the CIP for 2020. I know it's been projected further out. Is it somewhere that we can see that? So, we can see what projects are being planned for by engineering in the future?
Yeah, this is J.D. It's in the budget. If you give me a second, I've got it up. I can... I'll look and come back and tell you what pages that is.
That's no big deal. As long as we can, you know, as long as we can find it, maybe also since it's kind of a big deal, if we can make it a little more user-friendly for our residents as opposed to Alderman, and so they wouldn't have to go through 500 pages of the budget to try to find one page that indicates what's happening over the next five years, it'd be helpful.
So, to support that request by council, Marty, could we have that added to the website? So, not only, you know, a quick link from the webpage, maybe the engineering page. Is that what you're thinking? Where would you go?
It's on the engineering page, and it's... There's a hyperlink to the 2020 CIP, but I think it would be helpful to have several, you know, understanding that anything beyond this year is all subject to the budget.
Okay.
But, you know, we've always looked forward, like, I think it was five years, what the plan was. And then, you know, and so we have some sort of a roadmap, as opposed to in October, all of a sudden, we're like, okay, what are we gonna do?
Okay, so if we could get that link linked up, the community is probably interested, too, because it comes up so often when people complain about a specific road, they can kind of see where it's at and start advocating for it to be sooner than four years out or something.
Yeah, and Hinton was a... He did his job. He was very good at his job. He knew his job in and out. But when I came into this position, the way that I did, it was hard for me to grasp all those... Well, learn all the acronyms that I had to know and everything else, too, but finding the CIP, finding that stuff and following it was difficult for myself, too. So, yeah, we did. There are some areas where we may have veered this way or that way off of that, but it's... Nothing's in stone, and again, the idea of this presentation was for you guys to guide, to help guide me, and where I need to go and how I need to present this, and what our priorities are going to be, so that I'm not looking at CIP budget for this year and next year only, but, you know, 510, you know, we could go on and on and on, so I appreciate the feedback.
So, Joe, I think it'd be helpful for the council, and we can do a special session if you think it's warranted, but to look at what we did have projected for the next five years and what you're... You and the team's recommendations are to the council and the different funding sources that we would tap into to accomplish what you're proposing, and then we have kind of a place that we can start to navigate and get ready for... And then we have kind of a place that we can start to navigate and get ready for the budget season coming up.
That sounds great.
So maybe a little bit more.
Sure.
Everybody okay? Thank you so much, Joe. This has been very helpful. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next informational we have tonight is residents' request for the removal of a stop sign on Twenty-Fifth Avenue at Fourteenth Street. Marty's going to present that. And I did want to offer that I think that we're going to add an additional public comment after your presentation.
Sure.
So that the folks that are here that want to comment regarding this can have an opportunity to do that and they can leave if they'd like.
Can we sit here or come up to the podium?
Can you, that are remote, can you hear Marty if he sits at the table?
Can you hear me?
Yep, they can hear you, so it's fine.
All right. I'm here to tell you a little bit about the request that we recently received regarding stop signs at Twenty-Fifth Street and Fourteenth Avenue. Just to give you a little review, I think most of you remember this, but the first request for a full four-way stop at this corner occurred in March of 2017, according to our records. Request was made in the fall of 2018 by Alderman Parker to make this intersection a four-way stop by turning some of the yield signs into stop signs. And a review and vote by the Traffic Engineering Committee at the November 6 meeting turned down that request. And then at the December 11 city council meeting in 2018, the council overruled the Traffic Engineering Committee, voted to turn the intersection into a four-way stop, and subsequently those stop signs were installed. Recently, a Mr. Robert Hartley requested the council remove the signs at the corner of Twenty-Fifth Avenue and Fourteenth. In his email request that went to the mayor and which he forwarded to me, he said that the removal, his request was for the removal of the unnecessary punitive and wasteful stop signs at the east-west Twenty-Fifth Avenue and Fourteenth Street. It was signed by, signed from an email perspective by 12 people but was sent by Mr. Hartley. So in the process of looking into the history of this and looking, trying to find some information, we received another email, this time by Kirk and Kara Marsky, who asked the signs remain. They live on the southeast corner of the lot and they would like the signs to stay, citing how the signs have contributed to the safety of the neighborhood, particularly walkers and cyclists. And they cite several accidents and sent some pictures from those accidents in 2018. So as this was a city council decision, appealing to Traffic Engineering Committee denial and recent opposing arguments, the staff would like direction on the course of action or if you want, you obviously can make any decision you want this evening. But just want to know what you'd like us to do with this.
Do you have a recommendation from the administrative standpoint?
I don't, no. I think the, well, the recommendation from staff very early on was to not provide those stop signs. But I don't have a recommendation for you, Mayor, no.
Okay. So I remember a situation where liability is attached when a stop sign is put up and taken down. I don't know if that is accurate and if the current corporate council concurs.
So if we're going to go by liability, you have immunity if you follow the manual. And if you deviate from the manual, then you open yourselves up to liability as to contributing cause. So in the situation you raise, Mayor, if you remove a stop sign and the manual calls for it, you could be liable for road design that is unsafe. In a situation where the manual, the warrants, that's what they're called, the traffic counts don't support the four-way stop, then removing them to comply with the manual retains the immunity that following the manual does. And so that's the answer on liability. The reason staff doesn't have a recommendation is we don't have traffic counts. We don't know what the warrants would require today.
Thank you. Is there any comment by council or questions? Alderman Parker?
So I'm pretty familiar with this situation. And we did go to Traffic Committee to begin with to first change the north-south street from yield signs to stop signs and then from east-west to make it a four-way stop. And it was as a result of a few significant accidents that happened there. I don't know, it's a couple of years ago, something like that. And so, you know, the neighbors that live in the immediate area were very concerned. I live three blocks away from it. And, you know, it is somewhat concerning because we have a high volume of pedestrian traffic that goes through here. And on Twenty-Fourth Avenue?
Yep, Twenty-Fifth, right. Twenty-Fifth Street, Fourteenth.
It's a main thoroughfare to get from.
Fourteenth Street.
Yeah, yeah, it's Twenty-Fifth Avenue.
Right.
It's a main drag to get from Morgan Park to Sixteenth Street with one stop sign at the former Garfield location prior to the stop sign going up. So there was a lot of people that were traveling through there that were not familiar with the neighborhood and probably, although maybe going the stated speed limit, which is 30 miles an hour, in a neighborhood where people are crossing and traffic's trying to, you know, get out onto the street 30 miles an hour is pretty darn quick. So this was brought up by the residents as a request and I fully supported that. We had, Mike went and I had a meeting with a few of the neighbors there that he was familiar with. And we brought it to the Traffic Committee. It was denied because of warrants, because there were not enough accidents over, you know, a period of years to warrant a statutory stop sign. So then it came to City Council and it was voted at City Council. At that hearing, although Scott Hinton, the city engineer, was on the Traffic Committee and voted against it, at that council meeting that was voted in, I asked him specifically, because he lived within a couple of blocks of that stop sign, if you were living there now with kids, would you want to have a stop sign up? And he answered yes, a little bit of a pregnant pause, but answered yes, he would like, he would advocate for a stop sign there. So although it may not meet the warrants, and we, you know, when we voted on it, I believe we all understood that because it was denied by Traffic Committee, it is one of those situations where we, as a group, and I don't know, I don't think it was probably a unanimous vote, I'm looking right at Mike Waldron, and I'm doubting very seriously if it was the unanimous vote. But it was a majority vote that decided that this would be a good place to put a four-way stop, to try to calm traffic.
Thank you, Alderman Parker. Alderman Waldron?
Alderman Parker is correct. At the time, I went with what Traffic Engineering said and voted against it. But one thing that I have found in my experience, and I was on Traffic Engineering for 15 years, if you put signs up and you train people to know where the signs are and then you take those signs down, it's an accident waiting to happen. And why I may have been against those signs initially is something I think that we should leave up now.
Thank you, Alderman Waldron. Are there any other comments or questions by council? I'd like to open it up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public this evening that would like to address the council? Come on up. All I need is your name for our minutes and then you can make your comment.
Hi, I'm Vanessa. Hi, I'm Vanessa and.
Vanessa, what's your last name?
Peterson.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I think we should keep the stop signs up because I have three younger siblings and they love going outside of the yard. They love just riding on the sidewalk and sometimes they forget to look when we cross the street. With those four stop signs, I feel safe when they cross the street and even if they forget.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comment. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to address this issue? Please, just approach the podium and state your name.
My name is Shannon Domski and I live at the northeast corner. And Kirk was nice enough to send some pictures. Mine is the really pretty picket fence with the fireball that got to be Facebook famous. Vanessa lives kitty-corner from us with her family and one of those younger siblings and my son, who's eight and a half, are very, very close friends. And we really love the fact that there's a stop sign there and it does cause people to slow down. We have had still a few close calls of people not really paying attention, but we haven't had the accidents in the last about 18 months that we were seeing with regularity prior to that. And it does, as a parent of one of the 13 smaller children who live in that immediate vicinity, it makes us feel a lot safer that our kids can play out in their front yard without worrying about, you know, car debris or, you know, people flying through there at a high rate of speed. So I would respectfully ask that those stop signs stay up.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council?
I'm Kirk Marsky. I'm the one that sent the email with the photos. I don't really have anything additional to say other than what I put in the email. But if anybody had any questions, I'd be happy to answer for you.
So thank you for the communication.
I have a question. Marty, what, the people that want to take the signs back down, what is their reason?
They just claim that it's unwarranted and that they don't like to stop. I mean, they didn't really give a good reason.
Thank you.
Do we have the addresses for any of the people who are opposed to? The reason I ask is that just, you know, the proximity of where they live in relation to the stop signs could make a difference because, as I said in my email, we live in kind of a unique, on a unique street because it's a residential area. But as you've already pointed out, it's a cut through between Sixteenth Street and Seventh Street. It's a convenient way for people to pass through. I think people who, people drive differently when they're driving in their own neighborhood versus somebody else's neighborhood. If you live in our neighborhood, you probably are driving a lot more cautiously than somebody just passing through. And what I think has happened with the stop signs, four-way stops, is it's reduced the amount of traffic in the neighborhood. It has reduced the speed that they cross through, not just during the day, but at night. We've had problems with the bars that are down the street, people leaving. It's made it a safer neighborhood and there's a large number of people who pass through on our street who don't live directly on our block, but they walk their dogs, they're on their bikes, they're with their kids. As the previous speakers already pointed out, they're crossing the street, kids. It's a unique situation. If it were up to me, I would close off the end of the street between where we are and Morgan Park and cut down on the amount of traffic. Maybe with the money that you discussed earlier, we can talk another time.
Yeah.
But I don't want to get greedy. But the point is, you know, we deal with the traffic that's through, but the stop signs make it a safer environment there.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council before I close this public comment? You're welcome to. Sam, did you have something you want?
I just wondered if we had a motion of some sort to dismiss this?
It's informational and so unless you want to promote action and you want staff to do something, if you don't have anything that you want staff to do. So the direction from council is no, no action at this time, Marty, for clarification.
Yes, okay. Yeah, I'd like to respond by email to the both people that, Mr. Marsky and others.
And I, I don't mean to cut anybody off. Did anybody want to make a motion for action?
Yeah, I'll respond to their emails saying that that council was presented with the information, took no action.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next item is the administrators' update. Marty?
Thank you. I just want to report on several things that are going on with the city that I'm involved in. First, we're working with staff to improve our communications not only to you but to the public. And we are looking at several strategies that we're currently deploying now and in the very near future. So first is a review of the city's overall social media strategy. And it's going to encompass a little bit of a more unified message instead of each department wandering off on their own. I think that the continuity in that messaging will bring about a more effective perception of the city internally as well as externally from an economic development standpoint. Much of our social media has been casual and not as deliberate, I think, because I think it should be. So we hope to improve that, our current efforts on that. Number two, you should, we're now issuing two reports. You should be getting one of them, which is the council report. That comes out to you every other Monday, every other Monday. So you'll be getting the next one on Monday. I'd love to hear feedback about the type of information you'd like to hear or see in that council report. But it's our opportunity to fill you in on information on kind of those off weeks that we may not be having council meetings. And then the other one is a report we call Eight at Eight, Eight Things You Need to Know at Eight O'clock on a Tuesday morning. That goes out to staff. So that'll be kind of a way for us to make sure that staff knows everything that's going on in the city. Because a lot of times, different departments are working hard at their department and they don't necessarily know what's going on the other side of the city hall or other side of the city. And the last thing is something we call Action Report. It's an internal report that will be coming from the departments to the administrator's office and then generates either action by me or a request to the council. So it'll be the basis for creating council action reports and other agenda items. And so you'll be actually the beneficiary of that improved communication between departments and the administrator's office. So that's the one thing I want to talk about in terms of communication. The second thing is I attended a meeting via Zoom, of course, the Quad Cities First this morning, and they voted to dissolve the Quad Cities First organization and merge it with the Chamber. I've had discussions with Paul Rummler, the CEO, about our opposition to the merger and some of the issues about co-mingling public funds for advocacy and as well as the performance issues that we felt were part of that. They responded by assuring that the new organization would have public funds segregated so that they wouldn't be used for advocacy. Nevertheless, I was the sole no vote this morning on the vote for dissolution. The resolution passed and the merger will take place. But I would look forward to any thoughts you might have about this. And I'll be talking to you individually and as a whole about what you think our next step should be, some of which I've communicated to you previously as to what some of our options are. And last thing, some good news. We're working on, very recently, four separate projects with four separate investors on new projects in the downtown. And while we can't discuss the details of much of them until they move further along, but you'll be hearing about them. And I'm really excited because they're very high quality and they represent new investment with some very exciting features and amenities. And another thing, kind of not related to downtown, another longtime manufacturer here in Moline is looking to expand. And so we had a meeting with them last Friday and presented them with some information related to their project and their location. And that's looking very promising too. So a lot of good things happening in the downtown and on the outskirts. So that's all I have in terms of report.
Thank you, Marty.
Any questions?
Yeah, just, are there any questions or feedback for Marty? Alderman Waldron?
Marty, you sent out the mail or email on the police. And we are going around picking up brush on the right-of-way that people have placed out there?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
And I know J.D.'s got contractors out working on some tree issues that have been called in, so.
Marty, thank you for focusing in on our social media and our communication out to the public as well as employees, as well as the council. It's very much appreciated. I think that there's a lot of really neat things going on and really challenging things going on and not everybody understands. And so I appreciate that extra effort. I did want to mention that the police department has an awesome Facebook presence. And so if we could be as funny as the police department in our communication, I think that'd be helpful to the community. And then I did want to touch base, we did have two, actually, we had three ribbon cuttings this week that are demonstrating an interest in investing in Moline. I don't know if you are aware of them, but there's one retail store called CNJ that opened up. There's another retail store that's called, oh, now I've forgotten the name.
Catalina Rose?
Thank you, Catalina Rose. Thank you very much. And then there's a really cool mural that was an investment of Pam Fisher donated her property wall and Quad City Arts came along and they had a youth group, put up a beautiful mural right down by La Prima Vera. So if you're coming down the street this morning, you're coming down, you can see it. It is gorgeous. It's so nice. Alderman, what?
Well, since you brought that up, I'll talk about that first. My daughter and wife, my daughters and wife have already gone down and done a photo shoot by that. It's been on Instagram. So it's a great place to spread the word. Kids love to take their pictures in front of cool stuff. So that's awesome. Second, would it be possible to get us maybe just a little bit of information guideline about that picking up brush and stuff that's in the right-of-way? Are we saying that it has to be like bundled up and sticked in three-foot sections? Or is it just if you can get whatever, you can get out into the right-of-way, they'll pick it up? That'd be great because I've had some people who have had trees down ask that question on, you know, clearly it would take them forever to get it all into their green bucket over the week by week. But so if we could get just some clarification out to us so that we can spread that information, that'd be terrific. And then Marty, and I apologize, I know we had lots of emails going back and forth around about the South Moline Township Fire District. Was that something we were going to touch base on? Was that something we were going to touch base on or not worry about? It's just that August, I know we don't have a signed contract, but is there any concern that we should talk about this, this week or next week, or what's the plan for that?
I, I think we, I'm going to have Dirk come up, but I think we have time, according to Dirk. We got this, I think we have a plan of action that we're going to take to determine what our costs are and then approach South Moline Township with, with our, our proposal.
So I think the most prudent thing to do is for me to send notice. So I'm cutting to the chase, that's the end. I'm going to send a letter to the president of that district. But by way of background, for those who don't know the soap opera, so Moline Township Fire District is a paper district. They don't have personnel, they don't have equipment. They've contracted for the service to be provided by the city of Moline. There was an agreement, it dissolved, a new agreement was negotiated in 2007. You passed it, they never signed it. The, we have provided the services and they've continued to give us a portion of their levy, or maybe all of it, but it's been somewhere between $30,000 and $50,000 a year for all the services. We have a sense that that's not adequate. In 2011, staff discovered that they didn't sign it back in 2007 and so initiated a response, and to which they were ignored. They got no comeback, no, no, no feedback from the township at all. Fast forward to 2018, when this becomes an initiative for the council, staff is asked again to look into it. A new draft is started, Chief Snyder comes up with a lot of data for it, and then it disappears. Comes back up in early 2019 and then staff changes and I'm here, and so now we're picking up the pieces. They've continued to give us some money. What the statute allows us to do is just about everything. We don't have to provide the service to the township. They're responsible to contract it with somebody else. Ambulance is already on a per-call basis. We're allowed by statute to get our actual costs. We can charge them anything we want, but not to exceed our actual costs. And as we all know, in computing actual costs, particularly for the two services, pension costs are involved, the equipment costs and all the rest. There's a cap if it, the roles were reversed. If the district was charging us, there's a cap in the statute. There's no cap in that, but we have to dig into the data to understand what our actual costs are so that we don't exceed them if we're challenged on it. And so the questions are as follows. They've given us their levy from 2019. What is the difference between what they've given us and what the actual costs are? And that's a function of how many calls, what's the length of the call? Because how many hours and how many personnel are there for how many hours? And how long is our equipment there for how many hours? So for example, it's $2.50 an hour in the statute and $70 a firefighter when they go on a call if the district was charging us. That's the cap. What our actual costs are per firefighter, per hour, equipment per hour, we don't, I don't, we don't have a number yet. We're drilling on it, looking for it. And then we can look at what the average number of calls were, the average length of those calls, and then decide whether or not that's been sufficient. But to answer Alderman Went's question, the agreement that they never signed, but that's kind of been in the background all this time, allows, requires that if any party's going to cancel it, that they have to give the notice by August and it ends the following June. Well, although they've never signed it and we did, the safest thing to do will be for me to send his counsel saying, "City Council wants you to know, they don't think this agreement's in effect and moreover, we're canceling it. And if you want to have us continue to provide services, you're going to need to stop ignoring us." And then we'll take it from there in terms of coming up with a proposal. But that's where we're at in this rather long and involved, multiple-year cycle.
Thank you for that update. Appreciate it. Any other questions? Administrators' report? The next item for information is the COVID-19 update. Marty and Carol?
And I'm just going to turn it over to Carol. I believe we sent you a spreadsheet this afternoon and she's going to pull it up, which is hard to see. But if you have it on your computer or otherwise, it'd be good to follow along. Carol, you on?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Here she is, yep, okay. Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. All right. All right, good. Thank you, Your Honor. We have finally gotten our long-awaited sales tax and home rule sales tax for April. And if you take a look in the July column, on those two yellow highlighted numbers, those are the actual numbers for revenue that came in for July. So for our state sales tax, we received $674,152. And as we had anticipated, it is down from our original adopted budget of $837,929. That number on the top. We have included a new line that shows the percentage of difference between the actual and the budget. And so for sales tax, it is a drop of just shy of 20%. It's 19.55% down. And the total is $163,000 drop for the sales tax. If we move down to the home rule, it's about the same dollar amount of drop. It's down $168,000 from the original budget and about 26% on home rule. If you take a look at both of those numbers together, we're down about $332,000 from the original budget for the month of April for sales tax and home rule. I did take, it's not on your sheet, but I did add together from the beginning of the year, so it's the first seven months on a cash basis of all of our sales tax. We had some very, very good early months, you know, before COVID started. And if you look at those percentages, you know, we were up 10%, up 9%, up 4, and 10, and 26%. So we had some excellent numbers. So year-to-date for seven months on sales tax, we are up about $151,000 year-to-date for the year. And for home rule, however, we are down about $238,000 year-to-date for the first seven months. So we're down about $87,000 just between those two revenues. And as we are all aware of, you know, going into the August, September, October, November, we know that those numbers are still going to be, the numbers that won't be able to meet the budget. And we were hoping that we were going to be able to get our income tax and our local use tax in. We usually get those before July 15th and they'll probably come in tomorrow. So I'm sorry, I don't have those updates. We'll get them for you next week. And that's about all I have on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, we are moving forward with having all of the departments go ahead and review all the projected COVID-19 amended budgets. And as we get better numbers, we'll be bringing you back with updates. And at some point here, I know we're going to want to amend the budget. Since we last had an update on expenditures, as you know, we did put on hold or, and eliminate the GWI and merit increases for the non-union. We have had a couple of additional retirees that have come forward that we are currently under a freeze for replacing those. And Parks was able to find some additional money with Green Valley. And some of our COVID expenditures, we've got an additional of about $70,000 of potential reimbursement when we finally file that by the end of the year. So when we bring back those amended expenditure budgets, we'll have all that incorporated for you. And that's about all I have for this week.
Carol, can you help me understand the color coding? I'm trying to decipher it and I'm not, I'm not coming up with it. What is, what's the yellow mean when it's highlighted in yellow?
I, I actually talked with Mike Wentz on this earlier. I apologize for all the color coding. Keith and I, we use it as a working document, so simply ignore all the color coding except for the two yellow highlights in the column for July. And in the future, I promise I won't have all the color coding.
Well, I actually think it's kind of helpful. If, if, because, I mean, when you're looking at it, it's hard to pick up what's a negative and what's positive and what you're comparing it to. But if you could, like, color code it off of the original budget of if we're above or below, or color code it, well, I think that's probably the most effective. I don't know. That would be helpful to me.
Okay. I can try to make it pop out a little so it's easier to read.
And then something else that would be helpful to me is if I could get a summary of, like, year-to-date where we're at in those revenues. If we could get another column thrown in there that would give us the year-to-date to see how we're tracking compared to what our original budget was so that we can kind of keep our, where we're looking compared to where we projected we would be looking with our expenditure cuts. Based on the revenue.
Nope, I'd be happy to do that.
And is there? Is there more revenue? Because when I was, I was like doing some, associated with another project, looking at the SMTT tax. So are there other revenues that are grouped together or are there other revenues that are just not on here?
Yeah. As you may or may not recall, when we first started doing this, this is 18 of our most volatile revenue streams.
Okay.
And they're also 18 of the largest.
Okay.
We, we do have hundreds, if not maybe thousands, of additional revenues that we're going to be addressing when we go through the amendments. But a lot of those, fortunately, are, are a little more on the stable side.
Is there?
Some of them may be volatile, but they're small amounts.
I don't want you to do a bunch of extra work, but is there a simple way you can pull it out of the system and see where we are in all of those as a summary, as an aggregate, compared to where we had budgeted we would be?
Yes, I absolutely can. And it probably was about four weeks, well, maybe six weeks ago, I kind of gave an update.
Okay.
And at that time, our revenues are down, the COVID budget now I'm talking about, the amended COVID budget. For revenues, we were trailing about 2%. I think it was about, no, 1% over what the COVID budget was because we had been conservative on the other revenues and our expenditures were about 2% under. So at that point, we were at about a 3% swing on that really hunkered-down COVID budget. But I will get those all updated and I'll, I'll bring something back to you next week.
Thank you, Carol. Does anybody else have comments regarding this part of it? Is there more, Carol and Marty, or is that it?
That's it for today.
Thank you so much. Thank you for gathering this information for us. It's very helpful.
Yes, absolutely.
So now I'd like to open it up to public comment for general public comment, if there's any anyone would like to address the council regarding. Hearing none, I think that's it for our committee of the hall. I'd like to close out the committee of the hall and open up the council agenda. And Alderman Moyer? There'll be no invocation this evening. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please. Alderman Williams?
Present.
Parker?
Present.
Went? Alderman Went? Alderman Went?
Mute. Present.
Alderman Potter?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
Skoomaker? Waldron?
Present.
Berg?
Your Honor, I request approval of committee of the hall and council meeting minutes as well as closed session minutes of July 7th, 2020, and appointments made during committee of the hall on July 14th, 2020. Resolutions. Council Bill 1077-2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a license and concession agreement between the city of Moline and Will Stevees to sell food and beverages from a mobile food unit at the northeast parking lot of Stevens Park from July 17th, 2020 through July 16th, 2021, as weather permits, at the city's sole discretion, and authorizing city staff to do any and all things necessary to fulfill the terms of the license and concession agreement. Council Bill 1078-2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement between the city of Moline and the Board of Education of Moline School District Number 40, setting forth the terms for assignment of four police liaison officers to Moline schools for the 2020-2021 school year.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Moyer. Roll call, please. Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays? That motion carries.
Non-consent agenda first reading ordinances. Council Bill 3019-2020, an ordinance amending Chapter 35 zoning and land development of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section 35-5209, fence and wall requirements. By repealing Section, subsection 1 in its entirety and enacting in lieu thereof one new subsection 1 relating to the same subject matter. Council Bill 4007-2020, a special ordinance closing certain streets, more particularly described herein to vehicular traffic, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attester licensing agreement with London Construction Company and its representatives for use of public right-of-way, as well as certain park property and city-owned property in conjunction with the I-74 bridge construction. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thanks, Jeanne.
Thank you.
I'd now like to go into Ms. Lenee's business of the council. I'm just going to go around the room and if you have anything, please speak up. Alderman Williams?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Parker?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Went?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Alderman Potter?
Yes, Your Honor, most of us have been around a long time, even though we haven't, know that there's a lot of people in this community that make this, uh, uh, community run. One of them I'd like to bring attention to is a gentleman who's retiring from the Historic Preservation Commission, Carm Sinatra, who has tendered his resignation. He also spent in excess of, I want to say, 25 years on the Moline Planning Commission. And it's folks like him that are not in the spotlight every day, but help to keep this community going. And I want to thank him for his years of service and all those others who toil away in obscurity.
Thank you, Alderman Potter. Alderman Moyer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Alderman Waldron?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. I do have one item I sent out before the meeting, well, yesterday or something, some information about the community policing mobile office. The reason that that, I think, is, is quite relevant right now is because of the challenge of COVID-19 and getting, connecting with the community as well as providing services that the community needs. And their ability to get at those services has been very difficult because of COVID-19. This is a project that we were considering before, but it had not made the budget. And I would like the council to consider allocating funding from the Cures Act, which will be available, that is meant for projects that are not previously budgeted but can be impactful to the community to help address the gap that COVID-19 has presented. The Moline Community Development Corporation has already allocated $5,000 of their funding towards this project. And I'd be looking for the council to consider supporting the balance of it. I would expect the cost to not exceed $75,000. The base trailer is around $25,000, but then it has to be outfitted with cameras, computers, tables, that kind of thing for the community. It'd be a, a mobile office that would be utilized, would be hosted by our Moline Police Department, but also be utilized by the school system and our other community partners such as Project Now.
Motion to, motion to approve the funds to purchase the police trailer as described from the Cures Act fund.
Second.
We have a question by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Went. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Potter?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm having a little bit of trouble with this. I, I'm having trouble understanding why this is COVID-related, why we need this as a result of this. I'm, I'm supportive of, of the idea of having this, uh, this, uh, this project move forward, but I'm, I'm having difficulty understanding why now it's an expense that's COVID-related.
So I have a couple of things, but I think that I have a couple of people that want to dive into. In talking to our partners at the school district, they are very severely challenged in, in outreach with some of their students. So some of their students have been very engaged in remote learning. They don't expect to return to full, in-classroom learning in the fall and they're concerned about those students, accessing those students and bringing them materials. So that's one area that's important as we work on having a successful, what?
How, how, how are we going to bring the material? I guess I'm just not understanding.
So the mobile office would- So the mobile office would serve as an outreach? I'm the one that's talked to Rachel about it, Alderman Potter. The mobile office would serve as an outreach center and so it'd be a way for our liaison officers to come together with the school system to connect with those students that they're struggling to connect with. Another area of urgent concern is the census. We are severely struggling with getting good census responses and we're very limited in how we can interact with, with those community members. And this is a way for us to help facilitate that happening. So those are my couple of very specific issues. Chief?
Yeah, I was just going to comment from the police department standpoint. As you all know, representing different sections of the city, the Moline Police Department is physically located downtown. We have various different points throughout the city, including in our low-modern income neighborhoods that are in a distance from the police department. With coronavirus and the COVID-19 epidemic, some of those people don't have the ability to use public transportation to, maybe potentially leave their homes, potentially, as you've talked about here, have access to the internet. And so we feel that the ability to take that mobile office to an area and dedicate time there and as the mayor has spoken about, partnering with a couple of our other school districts or social services, Project Now, things like that, and do a joint effort in a location away from the police department and spend some time there. Additionally, that will give us a platform to have heat and air conditioning, to be indoors out of the elements, to serve those people, to invite them in, to maybe fill out the census, do different things, file a police report, community outreach, as, as you know in our narratives, with the police department is going to be important that we're in those neighborhoods and connecting with people in a non-enforcement capacity. So we feel that being able to have that mobile office to get into the neighborhood rather than having people that are struggling to get out of the neighborhood and to our police department would fit that COVID-19-related funding.
Thank you, chief. Dirk, did you have a comment?
I was just going to say that the...
Can you approach the microphone?
The analogy here on COVID is food trucks. If you look at the DCEO guidance, the DCEO guidance encourages the use of food trucks as opposed to everybody coming to a restaurant or gathering indoors. We're taking these services, like a food truck, to the decentralized process of providing it across the community instead of asking everybody to come to one place, be inside, and be less safe. So that's the analogy, is what we're doing with DCEO said. Decentralize the offering of services and take it to the people where they are, especially if you can keep them outside while you're doing it.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments? Roll call, please. Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Thank you for the consideration. How about, Marty, do you have anything else from staff perspective? Do any of the staff that are joining us today have anything for the council? Do we have executive session this evening?
We do.
Your honor?
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of collective negotiating matters, five ILCS 120 slash two, C2.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Williams and a second by Alderman Potter. Roll call, please. Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
He's whispering.
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Will now convene an executive session. Would you please clear the council chambers?